All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting. The Murfreesboro City Council meeting, it's August 10th. If you will, if you'll bow with me, I'll handle the prayer and the pledge. Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, I ask that you be with us, that you help us make decisions that, our Lord, are in the best interest of the city of Murfreesboro. Give us wisdom, give us guidance, and give us compassion. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several items on our agenda. Do we have anyone listed wanting to speak about any agenda items?
No one signed up today.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one signed up, we'll move to action items. You have a retail liquor certificate of compliance, Broad Street Liquor and Wine.
Broad Street Liquor and Wine has applied for a certificate of compliance for a new retail liquor store located at 2133 Northwest Broad Street. State law requires the retail liquor stores to have a retail liquor certificate of compliance. This applicant has met all requirements.
I have a question. Do we know if this site is gonna be affected by Town Creek?
2133.
2133 Broad Street. Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have ordered 2303, amend city code, Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages.
This is, changes recommended with this ordinance are to improve the administration of the regulations imposed by Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages, and to better align certain sections with Tennessee state law. These recommendations, recommended changes will also help increase operational efficiency and clarify the overall understanding for city staff and the public. In this, staff has not proposed any changes regarding the application process or limits for retail liquor store certificate of compliance, such as what was just approved under the prior item. Currently, there is a limit of one store per every 5,000 city residents, and location distance restrictions between liquor stores and other liquor stores, places of worship, and schools. The current process in Chapter 4 for applying for the retail liquor store certificate of compliance is on a first completed application received basis. With this current process, when we opened the applications up on August 1st for the current spot that was available, it led to a literal footrace in the City Hall Rotunda for that certificate of compliance that was just approved by council. Staff is now seeking council's consideration for a few different options for the ordinance that we will bring back on second reading, based on discussion today and council's preference on this. The first option would be to decrease the per capita limit, so instead of 5,000 residents, we can use 2,500, or 3,000, 4,000, whatever council's preference is. The second is that we can eliminate the cap. The third is that we can change the cap and increase the limits, or increase the distance limits between the stores. The fourth is to create a lottery-style application process, or we can do any combination of those options.
Or we can leave it alone, right?
We can leave it alone and potentially have another footrace in the Rotunda the next time we have a opening for certificate of compliance.
So keep it as is, add a lottery.
Yeah, the lottery idea also.
So with the lottery option, I do want to point out to-
Can we make it like Lotto, though, where there's little ping pong balls coming down?
I do want to point out to council that every time we take a completed application, we do require a nonrefundable application fee of $100, and the applicants have to secure the location, which means they have to either get a lease agreement, a signed lease agreement for that place, or they have to go out and purchase a building, on the off chance that they may get the certificate of compliance. So the second applicant who applied for this this time, who did not get the certificate of compliance, is, has paid for a building, he purchased the building, and now doesn't have their certificate of compliance. So there's a lot of money that they're putting into this on the off chance of getting it, for them to come in on a lottery and not receive the certificate of compliance.
Back when we voted on this, we did this because we said, I remember when we did this three or four years ago, that we were having these rush of liquor stores that were being put, right, literally right next, or not next to each other, but pretty close. So we put, we did the one store per 5,000. That's what we have right now, correct?
It's one store per 5,000, every 5,000 residents, and then there's also a distance requirement of 1,500 feet, that you can walk, a pedestrian can walk between the stores.
Right, so right now, based on 160,000 residents, we have, what's the, what's-
There's two stores, because we have 162,000.
And what you're saying is that we have more people who are wanting to apply to get at 32, right?
We do.
But-
We also have nine certificates of compliance that we have issued out, that we issued over a year ago, that have not actually opened or obtained a liquor license from the state.
So they're holding, I mean, to me, it seems like we need to fix where someone, there's a time limit on how long that they can apply.
An expiration date.
Right, you just can't go and say, okay, look, I think I may do it, I'm gonna put in a compliance and not have, just to be able to hold, stop competition from coming in. But at the same time, I don't think we need to lower that number to say, we're gonna go from 32 to 50. I mean, the reason we put that one per 5,000 is everyone agreed that that was a fair number as the community grows in population, and also locations can grow. So I, it sounds to me, if we've got nine that's sitting out there, and we could do a lottery, but you've got nine permits that are just being held up, that there needs to be some kind of progress, as opposed to just holding those.
We discussed this when it came up last time, to lower it from 5,000 to 7,500 or 10,000 also.
Raise it, right?
Raise it.
Raise it.
I believe you guys discussed that before I joined council.
Yeah, it was about a year ago.
Because I called you and told you I didn't like it.
Hypothetically, you called him and told him you didn't like it because you wouldn't wanna have any violations.
She wasn't like it.
I was a constituent.
Oh, you were a constituent, okay.
Mm-hmm. I called my city council member and complained.
I agree, I think there needs to be some kind of expiration date on the permit, that way we just don't have them held out there.
But I don't think we can retroactively put an expiration on the nine that are sitting out there. We cannot.
No.
So I like that idea going forward, but we still have nine that are being held up.
Was the last time we had a, this was a certificate of compliance that we just approved, when was the, how long has it been since we, 5,000, is it 10 years? How do we determine the 5,000? Is that through census?
Yeah, it's, I think we use the current population survey from the US Census Bureau, and it's the American Community Survey, I can't remember which one it is, but it's an annual-
And the number came about-
Estimate.
Estimate.
They don't do it census.
The 5,000 came about, we had a long discussion. Do you remember that? We looked at Smyrna, we looked at all the mid-state. At the time, I think we were the only one that didn't have a limit at all. I mean, we were-
We had a long discussion on it.
Can you amend it to where any existing application that is approved of these nine that says moving forward today, you have one year, a year and a half to accomplish this, or it's revoked? Can you amend it?
I'm going to look to Roman to this. I believe that because we've already issued the certificate of compliance, we cannot, because the state will look at it and see that there is no expiration date on there, so they will honor.
Yes, Councilman Maxwell. A little bit more of the history that goes into this. The state amended the statute regarding certificates of compliance a couple of years ago, and I believe it used to build in a deadline for them to seek their liquor license from the state. When the General Assembly updated that, they took that provision of the statute out. So that has created a very large gray area gap regarding what our authority is to issue, or to put a deadline or an expiration date on the certificates of compliance. Because I think the way, I didn't bring my computer up with me, but I think the way it reads right now is that, one of the provisions is that the certificate of compliance will remain effective for as long as all of the other provisions of the statute are met, which are location, name of the company, ownership structure, that sort of thing. So with that, it's an open question as to whether or not an expiration date would be effective. I believe the communication we've gotten from the state is that if we, if we, on certificates going forward, if we try to apply an expiration date, it may or may not be considered at the state level. So the whole thing, it's a bit of an open question. If the council's desire is to see an expiration date put on future certificates, we can add that back into our ordinance and see if the state will honor those.
Just to piggyback off of Roman, said that, looking at the statute itself, it says, "The certificate must state," and then it has a list of five different things, and then the last thing is that the certificate remains valid unless there is a change of ownership or location. So that potentially precludes the-
I'm confused, though. So we have nine out for potential locations, but nothing's been built for a COC that's not been obtained?
Correct.
Do we know if those nine are under construction, or if they, permits have been pulled, or sort of what's going on?
Well, wouldn't they have had to have a lease in place, or own a building that they're claiming is going to be, before they could have gotten the certificate? So, like, they're planning on converting something to a liquor store, or they're just sitting on vacant land? Right?
We think this is just a loophole, that they've identified a location and get a permit, and you can hold that indefinitely.
That's one of the potential issues that we think we're running into. I think we've discussed what our enforcement opportunities would be, to go back and try to contact these certificate owners to make, to ensure that they're still, have their ownership or leasehold interest in the property, that the ownership structure remains the same. But that's, you know, that's an additional lift on the financing.
Do we know how old these are? Are these, are they going back two years, one year, five years, 10 years? Do we know how far back these are?
It would be in the last two years. Prior to that, there was a moratorium on the issuance of the liquor store COCs.
The nine are two years or less? To me, that's not unreasonable, that somebody can take two years to bring it into-
Yeah. Does it, if they own the land with no building on it, does that count as getting compliance?
Like vacant land? Can you get a COC on vacant land?
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Can you get a COC on vacant land?
We issued, when the moratorium was lifted, we issued a few when they obtained a site plan through planning, but we had to have a site plan, an approved site plan through planning.
And that was so that we could enforce the distance requirement from other stores. We needed, we needed some point to be able to measure from and do that.
Would it be possible for us to get information that shows the nine, out of the, so 32, we have 30% of our, what I'd say, availability, that's just sort of sitting right now in a holding stage, but could we find out of those nine, nine out of the 32, what stage those buildings or locations are in? Once we got that back from planning, that may would give the council the ability to say, okay, these nine are just sitting there, we don't know if they're ever gonna be built, which really means we only have 24 of the 32, or 23 of the 32, that we may could consider adding more locations. But we, in those new permits, we could say, if you don't start within X date, then those are invalid, and then we just have those nine that are gonna be sitting until something happens.
That's an option, and you're right, what we can do is we can go to planning and see what site plans we had approved, cross-reference those with our building and codes records to see what permits were issued, if any certificates of occupancy are pending or have been approved, and report back to the council on those.
It just sounds like we've got a loophole that we need to close on being able to hold up everyone else who does wanna build a business, because we've permitted some that may not even, I mean, like Jamie said, it may just be vacant land, that there's not even, there's a site plan approved, but nothing is even gonna happen.
Well, then even if we try to close the loophole on our end, you're saying the state may preempt it, right?
That's correct. That's my concern.
Oh, we need to figure out what the state, what the ABC is gonna do.
We can have that conversation with ABC and-
Those nine applications, is that all by one person, or nine different individuals?
I just emailed you, Jennifer, to ask for copies of those nine COCs. Maybe you just send them all to council. Could you do that? Okay.
I think it would probably be nine separate individuals, because under the state law, one individual can only hold two certificates. It would have to be multiples.
It'd have to be multiples.
Okay. Any other questions? Can we get that information, and then we can consider that at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move to CIP reallocation.
Can we get a vote on the first reading of the ordinance as it's presented, and then we'll bring back the liquor store information for council's consideration?
Do it, let's defer it, and then-
Defer it.
That's my preference.
Figure out if we wanna-
Okay. Is that a motion?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now have CIP reallocation?
This is just the monthly report of the changes, or the transfers from CIP to general fund, and what's changed since last month, or the last workshop. No actions needed.
All right. Tennessee Law Enforcement Hiring, Training, and Recruitment Program Grant Contract, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration today, is a request in or to contract with the state of Tennessee to receive grant funding for police hiring and retention bonuses. So basically, the contract entails a five-year period where we'd be eligible to receive a total of $200,000 for retention and hiring bonuses. We did the math on that, and that roughly would cover about 13 officers per year. We know that our recent hiring trends were hiring more than that, so we would like to also extend that bonus to other individuals that may not be covered by actual grant dollars. So, last time we spoke, there were some certain definitions for police officers to be eligible for the grant, and that language has changed as far, along with reporting to the state. I think Councilman Wade had asked how we would track that. So basically, we would submit upon six-year, one-year, two-year, three-year, whatever qualifying anniversary date would be, we would submit that. We have 60 days to submit it to the state. They would send those funds to us, and then we'd have 30 days to distribute those to the employee. Those covered would be any individuals. I think previously, there was a prohibition from out-of-state officers receiving this reimbursement or this grant, and now out-of-state transfers would be covered, experienced or non-experienced. The only exceptions in this grant would be any post-certified officer. So post-certified officers in the state of Tennessee would not be eligible for this grant funding. And I know at our, last time I was before council, we had discussed some, maybe some relocation-type payments, or maybe a one-time payment with, for those that did not meet grant requirements. So those are some things we can still consider. Big thing is, we had to find out what this grant would actually entail, and what the definitions would be. I know we'll have to come back to council at a later date each fiscal year, but long-term, we're looking at, like in FY '26, if hiring trends stay the same, we're probably looking at a $230,000 cost, and if you apply $40,000 for the grant, there'd be a remainder of like 190. That would be probably the highest year that we would encounter. And like I said, if trends for hiring increase or decrease, those numbers would obviously change, so we tried to, we've tried to average at around 30 officers hiring per year. So that's just some of the long-term projections on what this could potentially involve, and I know a lot of these things will have to be brought back before council. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Is that 200,000 each year, or just 200,000 over five years?
It's 40,000 a year for five years, so total 20,000. We figured that would roughly cover 13 officers per year. We know that we'll probably hire more than that, so then, I would request, and I think that through our current fiscal budget, we'd be able to cover any cost overages, and then over the next couple fiscal years, we'd have to prepare that and present it as part of our budget.
And you said that this cannot be used for a Tennessee post-certified officer?
Right. So basically, seven years has kind of been the designation point. So basically, if you were a Tennessee police officer, but you were out of service for seven or more years, you would qualify as a non-certified police officer. You'd be eligible.
You're in another state.
If you're in another state, you can come here and qualify. The only, the only ones that don't qualify is if you're a Tennessee post-certified officer, and you have less than seven, seven years separation from your job, you do not qualify, so.
Any questions for Chief? Motion, a second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now have workshop items. We'll move to Blackman Park Master Plan Update. Oh, I'm sorry. A development agreement with Rutherford County Collegiate Prep Academy. Mr. Gore, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate being here and coming before the council for you all to consider this item. Brought an exhibit up. No slideshow. So what we're asking the council to consider is a development agreement with Rutherford County Collegiate Prep Academy. It's pertaining to providing private sewer facilities, or allowing them to construct and maintain private sewer facilities for a proposed school complex. The site currently sits within the city limits. I've kind of highlighted that area, you can see it in gray or blue, and it shows the connection to our public sanitary sewer. There's a property in between our sewer and the collegiate prep school site that they have been unable to work out a easement. We cannot get the gravity sewer through Manson Pike or down the middle of the road, so we have proposed somewhat of an end run, where they would be allowed to, what the Board of Education, Rutherford County Board of Education did, where they constructed a private pump station, put the force main in the right of way, and pressurized that pipeline to discharge into our sewer just a few hundred feet. So the development agreement in front of you is basically almost a mirror image of what the Board of Education, Rutherford County, you all approved for them. Again, it puts the construction and the long-term operation and maintenance of the private facilities on the collegiate prep academy. So I'm available for any questions, if you have them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the rule.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. I didn't do that. We move to the Blackman Park Master Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Here today with three projects on the workshop items. First one's the Blackman Park Master Plan. We authorized Gresham Smith to start on the master planning process, and they've been underway for a few weeks now. We've had a kickoff meeting, we've made some progress on that, so we want to take this opportunity to bring our work progress back before this body, let you know where we're at, also get some feedback on where that's headed. Newly-minted Director Nate Williams is here, as well as Angela Jackson. If you have questions for staff, I'd like to invite John Lavender and Jason Cockmore from Gresham Smith and Partners, and they've got a short presentation that I'd like to engage council today on the Blackman Park. So Jason is here, and then John Lavender over in the gallery.
Thanks, Sam, and thanks, council. Well, thank you for having us here today. So I'll just bring up this little quick presentation. Going through this, if there's any questions, please, please ask them. Open dialogue here. So we're looking at Blackman Park. First off, I just wanted to recap of what the ask is from the city. We've been asked to have a look at this master plan for this parcel of land out in Blackman Park. In the yellow, we're gonna be looking at the different infrastructure that might be required for the city, parceling up this parcel of land, for the different city services that might go out in this area. So we're just gonna site proof it, to make sure if we put a fire station or a police station, or those kind of services out, in this way, do we have capacity in sewer, water? And we also have the capacity of our land area out in the yellow. And then we'll also do in the yellow spot is a yield study as well. So if we allocate certain parcels to the community services, what does that leave us for the area there, and what the possibilities for that space? Also, there's a parcel for school and education, so we're gonna site proof this area to identify the capacity, what size of school it could handle, if there's any constraints in this space. But the big main focus of this master plan is the big green area, which is the open space park for Blackman, and that's what I wanted to dive into a little bit more today, is the park aspects. As Sam mentioned, we just started a 12-week journey with the city, and then what we did last week was we had a kickoff with the city, and we identified some of the vision and some of the program that we want to allocate for the park. So the initial priorities for the program for the park is a destination playground, pavilions, event space, trails, passive recreation, and restroom facilities. We're also gonna consider things like habitat creation, nature play, and pickleball courts. courts. This next slide just sort of picked up certain words that the city team were sort of mentoring as we threw out our kickoff, and these are just some themes that we started to pick up: cultural, nature, sustainable environment, habitat, nature play, robust, no annuals, so more native kind of plantings, nature within the city, education, destination, modern and clean design. So, we started to think about this could drive our vision for the park. So, when we start talking about a destination kind of playground, something that stands out within the landscape, something you want to come and enjoy, families to come and enjoy in the space. Different variety of pavilions, individual spaces, large group spaces, event spaces for the community, local groups doing yoga, events nights, a band playing in the park. So, just having a space for the community to gather. A variety of trails. The top left, this image up here, just demonstrating that we want that connection from that retail face at the front, that yellow zone that we talked about, making sure that's connected to that open space. Variety of trails hierarchy of having a primary running, walking trail, but then also having those moments where you can get off the main track and explore nature. By doing that and creating those trails throughout the space, we can have opportunity for different passive recreations, so exploring nature. And having little nodes where you can pause and reflect with nature throughout the trial system as well. So, having that big destination playground, but also having those little nodes to explore as well. Is there any questions on these so far? We talked about a 12-week journey. We're in phase one at the moment, and we're still trying to fast-track that a little bit. You can see there in the light blue, we had visioning starting in week three, but we've pushed that up into week two to help define that. And I must admit, thank you to the team that provide the lighter information for the city. So, it's been very helpful. So, once we're trying to work out the survey information, that's been helpful for us to start planning some of this, some of the park elements. We have a phase one, phase two, phase three. So, phase one is gathering the existing information and identifying those themes and vision. Phase two is how is that implemented out on site, so what does it physically look like as a master plan? So, coming up with a concept, developing a draft concept for the park. And then, phase three is amending that master plan to any comments in the community input through there. And I'll just open up for if there's any questions on where we're at the moment. Obviously, we're just early on, so is there any feedback?
Have we thought about a splash pad?
A little bit, I guess. It just comes a lot of maintenance and cost associated with that. So, we could add that to the considerations poll, and if budget allows for that, and working with the city, we can, I guess another key factor too is utilities availability in that location as well. So, I think we'll just try and put more of a passive kind of recreation space, yes.
Just to provide some additional information on that, we've, our parks and rec teams working diligently on a splash pad project at Patterson Park. I think maybe we'd like to see that one implemented and how it's going there at that location, and then see if that's a program that we might extend to some other areas in our city. Nate can certainly jump up, provide some more color on that if you need it.
So, we're looking at, we're, I didn't hear anybody saying anything about ball fields or pickleball courts. What are we doing about that? Is that going to happen in Blackman, or is that going to happen somewhere else?
Yeah, so, so we're managing the vision for this park, Councilman Wade, based on some feedback we'd received from council in previous meetings, as well as the budget's been allocated. We have some other park space that we think probably would be more appropriate for some organized athletics, athletic fields. We talked specifically about pickleball at this location because there really seems to be a pretty high demand for pickleball space and pickleball court, and that's a fairly easy-to-implement program in a variety of locations.
Was that a meeting that had a couple of things that I'd suggest? There was a possibility of a course, like a road course over a trail, so we could actually do some, run a 3.1 mile, I think it is, for a, you don't want to talk about.
About the 5K, 10K?
Well, it's smaller than that. It's the, it's the, like a cross-country for schools.
Cross-country for schools.
Something that could be involved in that. And then, disc golf is another thought. Maybe it's not big enough for maybe an 18-hole, but maybe a nine-hole disc golf course is something to consider there too.
Yes, so our thoughts about the trails, they would be in the park, but also integrated in the balance of that 150 acres. I'm going to test Jason, see if he remembers, but I think we were at 3,000 feet kind of perimeter number on that, which doesn't quite get us to the space we need for, you know, a 5K type race, but to be an opportunity maybe to extend those and lengthen them somewhere in the site. Jason?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Bill. And that's what, when we talked about in the kickoff meeting, was trying to get that 5K trail system, but then also, maybe we have some switchbacks in and stuff, if you have to do two loops. But then also, it was mentioned by the rec, the sort of cross-country facilities as well. So, that's where we were sort of, we'll get to the different hierarchy and, sorry, that hierarchy of the different trails and things like that. So, that's what we will try to implement throughout the space. And then, understand the disc golf as well kind of thing. We can explore that, because they sit nicely in a park, but obviously, got to be careful of any constraints of foreign frisbees and things like that within the area.
Sam, you had said there'd be other locations or better locations for pickleball and ball fields, I think, following up to what Currie had said. Where are those other locations, I guess, under consideration?
So, we have 150 acres west of Veterans Parkway and 96 in this same area, gently rolling more level than this site. This has a lot of relief, relatively speaking, from Murfreesboro, has a lot of relief up and down. And then, I believe there was an effort by our Parks and Rec staff to start looking at that property for some potential, to meet other needs. I think we set up for this Blackman Park project, when we, when we brought the master planning effort to you, that it could not be the answer to all of our parks and recreation needs in the city, but we would use it to meet some of those that matched with the character of the land and the nature of the park and the feedback we've got from our park surveys and community interactions, as well as the mayor and council. But, but very specifically, looking at that 150 acres on Highway 96 is a, is a potential outlet for that. Nate, was there anything you wanted to add on that?
The only encouragement, it's taken us, there's lots of things that has happened in the process to getting Blackman Park discussed and moving along. I mean, there's, going all the way back to 16, or 17, when we bought the property. The decision, I think, has been made rightfully so to not have high-intents use, like lights and all those things around the cloister and the Blackman or the Berkshire neighborhood. But, I think Bill can attest to this, we've not built baseball and softball fields since the mid-'90s. And if you go back and look at our population in the mid-'90s and where our population is right now, we do not have enough softball fields and baseball fields. And, look, I get that may be a discussion that the council's going to have to talk about on funding those ball fields, but they have, legacy development's not coming. We've got to build some ball fields. We have four softball fields at McKnight Park for young lady softball. And, you know, we've got 32 tennis courts at Adams Complex. We've got four baseball fields at Sportscom. We have seven out at, or five at Sportscom. We have seven at Barfield, and that's just not enough for the growing community we have. And we're having to have discussions now with Central Magnet School and the other people who are using those facilities because we don't have room. But, I mean, the private sector is not going to go out and build ball fields. They're just not going to do it. So, I mean, I think that 150 acres we have on Highway 96, we can't look 10 years from now and still be in discussion to build those because, I mean, we'll be at 235,000 residents and still have the same 15 ball fields or less that we have right now. So, I think that has to be a priority.
So, for the discussion today, are we comfortable with the vision? We heard a couple of ideas from Councilman Shacklet, Vice Mayor Shacklet, but on the structured athletics, athletic fields, looking at those at another location, or is there an appetite to talk about them for this one?
No, I mean, I think if we had the discussion to put structured athletic fields next to Berkshire and the cloister, that, that would, that discussion would not go over very well, even though the LED lights you have now are not very intense. I don't think that's an appropriate discussion, but, you know, we bought that 150 acres back in 2016. It was a heck of a deal. We bought that for $27,000 an acre at the time that, you know, now the property's probably worth $100,000 an acre, and we just need to be able to push that forward.
I think the vision of this being a community park or neighborhood park, really integrated with the rooftops, has a lot of merit, and that's where the direction's headed. I think city administration and our Parks and Rec staff are hearing your thoughts today.
And, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I can go and name the soccer facilities that we've invested in, tennis facilities that we've invested in, Patterson Park, Sportscom, redoing Borough Beach, redoing the entire interior of Sportscom, and we've just not added ball fields. As a matter of fact, we've taken away ball fields more than we've added ball fields. So, that, that'll have to be a discussion with the council on how we fund it and where that revenue comes to build a 16 to 20 million dollar sports facility, but I'm just saying, we've talked about it for a long time, and I don't want those, my opinion, I don't want the 150 acres out on Highway 96. These projects go in conjunction, really. But, if we go back and say it takes us 10 years to build ball fields, as long as it's taking us to do Blackman Park, we're going to be in significant trouble. We have that, the council has that discussion in 10 years.
So, it's good timing. Ms. Tucker has pushed out our community investment plan, community investment program information to our leadership team. We'll be having the discussions on projects and funding in the next couple of, two, three months. I think from Parks and Rec standpoint, we got a message today to look at filling some of those gaps in our, needs in our community.
And council, I'm just one person, so.
Can we put that on the agenda for the next, that needs to be discussed. We've been, I've been complaining about Blackman Park for, ever since I've been on the council, and we still hadn't gotten anything done. We hadn't even moved dirt.
Well, hopefully, we're good now, but.
But, we need to, just like you said, it needs to be a joint venture with both properties, not just one.
Would that be maybe a, maybe a September workshop item? We could, we could maybe rehearse Nate, our park master planning task from a few years ago, where we've closed the gap on some things and where we still have some significant needs on others, and maybe just give you an update on where we spent money and projects that are in the works, and then maybe get some feedback on next steps for other facilities.
Is it possible to have something a little more concrete that maybe by the September meeting workshop, that you guys come to us on an estimate? I know Nate's provided this before, but give us an estimate on how much it would cost to go through the engineering and the programming process and the master plan process, not for our overall park system, but for that property? And then, we could come up as a council with a plan that we said, look, over the next two years or three years, it's going to cost X number of dollars, and we could plug that in to how we, how we fund that.
I remember during budget, we discussed engineering on that and using school ball fields both.
We did.
Yeah, we discussed it during budget.
When you say that, you're talking about the 96 property, the one further out?
No, the 96, the 144 acres that we have across from where the Del Webb community's going.
Yeah, we could, September, we did have a plan out there, so updating that, we should be able to do that by September as far as costs are concerned.
We've got a good level of base information already on that property, surveying and technical and others.
Yeah, we'll do that, and then the schools property, we'll continue to work. That's also, can be helpful.
And to add what you just said, Shane, we've actually taken away, you know, Oakland's Park, I used to play out there. It's, there's no ball fields out there anymore. But, we do have something to consider. We do have land at our city schools, where, to your point, we could add some ball fields there in addition to the 150 acres.
Sam, sorry to throw both of that off, but.
Not at all, Mayor.
Well, they really are together. I mean, both of those projects are together.
What we like about this workshop format, just good open, and I think good engagement for our design team today on the, specifically on the Blackman Park project and staff, able to hear some of your thoughts on that. We'll, we'll continue to work on that and then work on a September update on the things you've asked about today. Anything else for our design team? Gresham Smith?
Are you have questions?
Jason, thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move to item seven, Town Creek Phase Two Daylighting Concept.
Yes, and similarly, we have Rick Maloney and Reagan Smith here today to talk to us about Town Creek Phase Two. A few weeks ago, we authorized them to do a deeper dive on our concept plan and turn it into a master plan, leading us into the detailed design. They've done a good bit of work with staff and then on their own, and they've got some information we'd like to share and engage you. Would remind you that this comes out of a concept that we presented in the Bottoms Redevelopment Plan, which really came out of an infrastructure issue we found on Town Creek Phase One in the 2007, 2008 timeframe, so it's continuation of those projects. And so, I'll ask Ryan Maloney with Griggs Maloney come up to introduce his team, and they've got a short presentation for you.
Very good. Thank you, Sam. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We appreciate you having us here to share this update, and we're going to ask that we, we get the same level of engagement and questions and comments throughout the discussion, make this an open forum, just like Blackman Park discussion was. As Sam mentioned, this project really originates from a infrastructure need, infrastructure that's in place now that encapsulates Town Creek, was put in forth in 1950s. It's getting aged. There's been some repairs that have been required in emergency situations over the years, and that can be a costly effort. In addition, the cost to replace that infrastructure is very high to the city. So, a few years back, city staff envisioned a, had the vision to daylight Town Creek, and with that came some land use questions that arrived with it. You know, how do, how do you develop around the corridor of the creek? What becomes of the bottoms from a land use perspective? And in 2017, Reagan Smith did the bottoms, historic bottoms redevelopment study. Out of that, really spawned this project. This is, this is a genesis project, one that created the redevelopment plan for historic bottoms and one which a key component of the historic bottoms redevelopment came from. So, this really sets a tone for what happens in the bottoms area and along the Broad Street corridor, and we've got the Reagan Smith team here today. We've got Kevin Gunter, Arledge, and Tyler. And they're going to walk you through and show off a really, really exciting master plan. I think you'll, you'll enjoy the presentation.
Thanks, Brian, and thank you, city leadership and everyone here in attendance today. I'm super excited right now about this project. This is a culmination of a vision that I think. This is a culmination of a vision that I think both the city and the community have really been trying to get into a real place for a while, and I think we're getting pretty close. This plan and this project are going to do some really important things. One of those is this is a catalyst. This is a catalyst for economic vitality. This is going to be something that affects not only the downtown, but public's open space and the Historic Bottoms area, and it will be an economic factor. Second is connection. This is something that's going to connect the Greenway. If you think about all the places the Greenway takes you now, this is going to extend that right into downtown and then connect it to the Discovery Center, and it's going to connect you to a creek that you may not have even known was there and the natural amenities that come with that. And we've used the word in the past about this area as a zipper. This is really that zipper that's going to connect together Broad Street, the downtown side, the Historic Bottoms side, and the Greenway and Open Space side. This zippers that together and functions as really a gateway into your central business district. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Lauren. We've done some 3D modeling for this space that I think really communicates some exciting design elements, and we're going to share those with you briefly.
Every city needs signature parks, green spaces, and places for people to come together. Kids need places to play and connect with nature. Intertown Creek, downtown Murphy's Borough's urban backyard. What began as a need to update failing infrastructure turned into an opportunity to bring a bit of the wild into the urban core. The design can be simplified into three distinct zones: the programmed and active, passive and naturalistic, and the formal and civic. In the programmed active zone, you're going to find a gateway to the park from Cannonsburg Village and the existing Greenway. A large open plaza with vendor buildings, a variety of seating opportunities, rustic amphitheater-style seating, a splash pad, and a flexible stage. This is also the first opportunity to experience the creek. In the passive and naturalistic zone, included is a large open lawn, naturalistic plantings, opportunities to engage with the creek, large boulders to scramble and perch on, and an accessible route to a beach that is available to all mobility levels for sharing in the experience of the creek. In the formal and civic zone, the plaza at Broad and Church Street sits at a key intersection, and it will function as civic space for the site. An elevated pedestrian crossing is planned for Broad and Church Streets, and we've included space for a landing building that could house an elevator, vendor space, and restrooms. The Hardscape Plaza includes terracing, seat walls, and planting space, areas for tables and chairs, and an additional vendor building that will be a focal point of the site. I want to talk to you a bit about the circulation hierarchy and how that will work. The sidewalk along Broad Street will be widened and separated from the street by a planting strip with street trees. The Greenway will be the most direct route through the site. It'll connect to the existing Greenway and the Discovery Center. An internal to the site will be a secondary trail system that's accessible and will lead to creek-level experiences. This site has tons of potential as a new gateway and amenity and economic driver for the city. It's an escape into nature and a place where people will want to be. Thank you. Questions?
Did you say a splash pad?
Just threw that in there at the end because I heard you. But, it's...
Here's a better...
Hey, Sam, I have a quick question. The one thing that sticks out when you look at the overall aerial of the project is the corner of South Front Street and Memorial, in that we're designing everything around that corner. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so is there...
So, Mayor, that's the site right here. That mouse is making some motion right there, site right there. And so, we have looked at that. I think we want to revisit that with our design team and maybe see that's the one remaining. What I would say is a gem property along Broad Street. You're all aware, I think, that we're realigning Front and Vine Street, so we'll see a reconfiguration of the space in that area. I think it gives us an opportunity to maybe look at this property, our public infrastructure needs with traffic and transportation, as well as our Town Creek site, and...
Some of that property will have to be taken to widen South Front Street, or South Front Street anyway, will it not?
Yeah, we think there'd be some impact on South Front Street. We do have a very detailed design that shows that. We just, we did not incorporate it into this exhibit, but certainly something that we need to look at rather quickly in the next couple of weeks or so, just to make sure that, how that property fits into our overall plans down there.
My comment on that, we only get one shot to do this right, and this is another one of those projects that we've been working on for quite some time. But, when you look at from South Church Street all the way to South Front Street, it just sticks out that that corner piece of property is not part of the overall design on that, how you're integrating that into that streetscape in the park area there.
What is that right there? Is that the...
Longhorn Liquors.
Longhorn Liquors. I think it was formerly Shoney's effort at a Peanuts and Steakhouse called Marbwire's. And for some of the folks with a little more history in Murphy's Borough, that was Shoney's in that area as well that got rebuilt, redeveloped over time. Certainly, that corner at Hickerson and Front, which would be here, I think that's key area number one on this concept plan, is a pinch for us on that side, and we've narrowed down, very narrow there. And certainly, this would give us an opportunity to make that more robust and a more well-developed streamside on that side of the property, as well as the potential impacts on Front Street.
From a roadway standpoint, I think both that property and the property across where the yard sale is now are two properties that create issues there that from a technical standpoint, we may be looking at needing to acquire.
South Front Street and then Vine Street straight across from that, that's a very dangerous intersection to try to get in and out of there, especially if people are trying to make from South Front Street a left turn or to shoot across to Vine Street. That's a pretty dangerous place.
Yeah, traffic-wise, it's really tough, and there's quite a bit of accidents there, and Sam can add to that. The other thing is, is we activate and want to redevelop the Bottoms area. Pedestrian traffic from the square and the activities up there and flowing into the Bottoms area, it's important. One of the reasons we did the pedestrian bridge up on Church Street side there is to handle the pedestrian traffic, and I think it makes some sense to also try to address that down towards where Front and Vine is right now from a safety standpoint.
I think it goes back to a lot of the things we learned from our Bottoms study. Broad Street is an impediment to connecting this area to the downtown. The ability to make a left turn out of the Bottoms at many traffic conditions is very difficult today. Our concept for Front and Vine includes signalizing that intersection. We do need to shift it closer to Church Street to get better separation between West Main Street and the church and Broad signals for traffic progression. Also gives us a bit of traffic calming there as well, helps moderate speeds between those signalized intersections. And so, the, those were all things that we learned from the property owners and users of the Bottoms area, the Cannonsburg area during our visioning sessions with the public. So, it gives an opportunity. The pedestrian bridge was another concept that came out of that, and I don't have it in this presentation, but in the next agenda item, we do have some exhibits that show some more information. And so, I want to maybe talk about the Front and Vine intersection and the pedestrian bridge a little bit more with that presentation. But, purposefully, we stacked the Town Creek project and then to look at the Broad Street TIF next because of their inner relationships. This is a very busy exhibit. I know it's hard to maybe take it all in in this environment, but our design teams provided a good bit of information. The first couple of pages of this were included in your agenda item. We'd be glad to share the balance of this presentation with you by email and certainly offer you the opportunity to engage with us as we convert this to a detailed design. Anything else? Any other thoughts or comments on Town Creek? Anything for our design team?
I'll throw it out there, and you may not like what I'm going to say, but the splash pad, I love it, but who's going to police it when somebody's taking a bath in there or taking a shower in there?
I'd agree.
Or in the creek in general.
So, it could be a revenue source for us there, maybe? I'm just kidding a little bit. Actually, so, some very, very long discussions we've already had with city administration and city legal about how we structure and set up this property. While it looks like a park, there's certainly an opportunity in how we orchestrate and organize and manage this, including possibly a vendor contract for providing, for being able to control and have this space. If we create it as we've created other of our greenways and parks, it creates, it's a public space and we have less opportunity to police that. So, we want to do a very specific, very designated use in this area so we can restrict activities that go on there differently than we would restrict, say, a First Amendment space or a public sidewalk or a public greenway.
So, we're looking at that. We're aware of that potential.
Sam, that Phase 1 area over there on the right is, is that a blocking bridge that's going over there? What is that?
Phase 1, oh, that's, yeah.
So, on our exhibit here, we show a potential for a future raised pedestrian crossing there as well, future pedestrian bridge. This is just showing that it's capable of making that connection and that we allowed space for it. Church Street would be as a significant impediment to pedestrian traffic as Broad Street is. And so, the opportunity to maybe get a bridge over Church Street is something we want to work on for a future phase, tying that into Town Creek Phase 1 and continuing on to Murphy Springs. At present, we would see an enhanced pedestrian crossing there with actuated pedestrian signalized elements that will allow safe passage on the surface across South Church to connect to Town Creek Phase 1. And Ryan and his team are working diligently with the design on that, and while we didn't talk about it specifically today, we're looking to get that into permitting with the state in the next month or so, get their feedback on it, then hopefully bring that back as a project put out for bid.
So, daylighting that right side there is not a part of this project?
It's not a part of this phase. It's a separate phase. Because of the site constraints over there, we did not have the palette, the canvas to work with as we do here. We're very tight on space between Church Street and the McDonald's property, the outlet from Murphy Springs, and where the Box Culver crosses under Church Street. So, really kind of threaded the needle through there with that, worked with the grades and utilities to come up with a way to daylight that. Still create a very, very open, very appropriate place, but it just won't have the enhancements and amenities that we're able to do over here.
So, we see that coming.
Same time or similar timeframe?
Okay, that was right.
Yes. It's tracking a little bit differently because how far along we've been on that and the sources of funding we've had for Phase 1. Phase 2 has primarily been an ARPA-funded project with land purchases by the general fund or our capital plan.
Do I only see four parking spaces?
No. Sorry. What am I missing? I'm sorry.
No, no parking. Yes.
Yes, we've added quite a lot, thank you, on the Cannonsburg Village side. And then, on the Church Street side, there's a few parallel parking spaces, but the majority of the parking is on the Cannonsburg end.
Okay, so it'll share parking with the current Cannonsburg parking? Or will it be new parking being built at Cannonsburg?
There's new parking being built along Hickerson Drive as we redo Hickerson. And there's also the, once the pedestrian connections in place, Civic Plaza will have ample parking across the street.
Yeah, it is a good point, though, in that corner property does play into that and perhaps making it a little more accessible, parking over on this side of the street.
Yeah, I'm thinking if I'm going to use this, I won't be walking. I don't work downtown or live downtown, but I could, I'm only a couple miles.
Yeah, you don't get it. But, when you see this...
West side, west side.
Yeah, when you see this, you're going to want to get your name on the waiting list, okay?
We'll see.
You see it come out of the ground. I think, good point. We've had a very pedestrian-oriented focus on this area and generally in the Bottoms, trying to connect pedestrian users on the downtown side to the Bottoms. We have tried to incorporate some on-street parking and public parking where we can. Cannonsburg and that property, we haven't talked specifically about it today, but, you know, Parks and Rec team and city administration, we're looking at the future for Cannonsburg, and does that get reimagined, repurposed as a part of our Bottoms study? I think there's some activation and some things we could do there that would really, really give us a good utilization of that property. And so, noted, Ms. Everwater, on the question on parking, and we try to make sure we have some available. We think that'll be a managed parking situation so somebody's not camping out in it for 10 to 12 hours during the work shift and tying it up. We want those, similar to the downtown parking spots, we want those to be rapid turnover, maybe an hour, two-hour time limits on those to help promote turnover of those parking spaces. And we didn't highlight it very much here, but we have included in these areas that are keynoted, keyed here as two, and then two over here. We see those as really vendor spaces that would include food and beverage, entertainment opportunities. And to activate those, we've got to provide utilities, but we also have to think about a way to deliver services to them. You've got to deliver products to them, you've got to take away garbage, and those sorts of things. And so, we've tried to consider those elements as we put this master plan together as well.
Can I speak briefly?
Yes, please.
The Greenway itself is also planned to have traffic-rated paving, and that will allow access through the site for emergency vehicles, maintenance vehicles, and also for food trucks to come in and park right in here. We see this as a food truck court with some enhanced, or reinforced grass pave. And you would control people not driving through it with retractable bollards.
Well, thank you for your time and...
As we talk about this, and this may be a discussion that comes up to the council, seeing this overall plan now really gives a whole lot more benefit to us to see exactly how everything ties in. But, I think also, as you see that, as it comes in, it really brings out, I think, how beneficial that corner piece is to the overall project. Anyway, that is a discussion coming up that maybe the council will have to have that. I mean, I would personally be for talking with the ownership group of that on, I mean, Jamie brought up parking, the connectivity into South Front Street. It wouldn't be very hard to be able to make an argument why that piece is very beneficial to that overall project when the majority of that property's already been acquired along Broad Street for this project. I hate to even bring up the C-word. We've had that conversation over the last three years on that project, but, or on this entire project, but that seems like that's just going to be a disaster waiting to happen when that road gets realigned, the road gets widened, and we're looking at parking and all the things that are in that area.
Well, if I may, with the scheduled discussion, if those items are to be included, that corner of Front Street and Broad, be aware that, you know, we were using ARPA dollars here. There's specific schedule and timeframes. We've got a hit to do that, so if that conversation... We've got a hit to do that, so if that conversation's going to progress rapidly, it's good.
Yes. We'll turn some information around on that. I think the design team heard it, I think city administration heard it, and it's a conversation we had a little bit earlier this week. But we'll turn that around early next week and see if we can't make some, get some information, make some decisions on.
Okay.
Good discussion. I appreciate the engagement, the design team appreciates the engagement, and we're going to continue working with this design group to turn this into a detailed design, which really starts with the creek. We haven't talked about the creek, but that's, you know, really our purpose here is to overcome that aging infrastructure and to justify the use of the ARPA dollars for green infrastructure. So we'll be moving quickly to turn that into a plan and profile design with the ability to upgrade these elements as you see them here. Anything else for our group today on this?
Thank you. We'll move to Keystone, Broad Street redevelopment, TIF overview. Sam?
All right. And then Mayor, the last item on our workshop agenda today from us would be a discussion of the, an overview of the Economic Impact Plan and TIF for the Broad Street development. We've been working this project for some time now. We've made good progress with our financing plan and economic impact plan on this property, and so we want to provide you some background on that today and certainly answering questions about the Economic Impact Plan and the tax increment financing approach. So the Economic Impact Plan, coming from the developers program, include, they considered in that the 30,000 to 40,000 square foot of retail, 80 to 150-room hotel. They have an 80 to 100-for-sale residential units and 239 for lease units in that. The development team is here as well, and they'll be happy to talk about the Hometown Heroes program or some of the details of that. They'll also be adding 715 parking spaces connected with the pedestrian bridge. Ms. Overwater, this would give us some additional parking in that Broad Street, Church Street, Front Street arena. And for the development team, it represents an investment of $170 to $175 million in the downtown. Also included, 1,700 construction jobs. The TIF itself is programmed out for 20 years. In the development agreement today, it is capped at $26 million. We can, we'll show you the math on that shortly. The project actually includes $49 million of infrastructure costs that would be eligible for reimbursement by the TIF. However, the TIF can only produce about $26 million to offset some of those infrastructure costs. Now, I say that to say that the total infrastructure investment here by the development team is very near $50 million, and TIF helping finance about half of that. It considered the lodging tax or the hotel motel tax, also the local option sales tax that would be generated by this property. We did not include indirect benefits, although we think those are very significant. They're much harder to identify and quantify, so we only would mention that to say that the indirect benefits are there, but they're not included in some of our math and numbers today. So the tax increment financing elements, it's, of course, it's property tax only. Today, the seven acres that are involved in this project yield $1,494 to the city per year, $2,535 to the county per year. The property will be appraised after the project is completed or as it's completed in phases. It will, the TIF will include dedicated taxes. The city has certain dedicated taxes that are paid from property taxes, and the county has statutorily assigned taxes that are funded from property tax. And there's a small administrative fee that goes to the Industrial Development Board, who is really the implementation tool or the implementation agency for the TIF. Those monies will be retained. We'll go over that math in just a minute. The increase or the increment, the tax increment then is set aside for financing of the project. And again, we think that'll yield about $26 million over 20 years. And we've already said the infrastructure and parking are eligible. So here's a table, it's got a lot of numbers on it. I'm going to ask Mr. Tyndall maybe to jump in here and give us some color on this as I work through a little bit of animation.
Oh, right. So the taxable value is estimated about 150. The actual investment there is pretty close to 170, 175, given it an assessed value of 55, almost 56 million. As you can see, the different types of elements in the development are taxed or assessed at a different rate. Overall, the city, after reserving its portion for debt service, and then the county reserving a dedicated rate for its debt service, you can see the net there of how much a city would get, about $100,000, and round numbers, about $435 for, to the project in the city taxes. So the total annual going to the TIF reimbursement is about $1,003, and the city retaining some of those property taxes and the county retaining some of their property taxes. That's a property tax breakdown, and if we go to the next slide, we'll see the direct taxes. So this is the reserved portion or the dedicated portion of the taxes that we had talked about for county and city, and then the additional taxes that come from lodging and the sales taxes, so the occupancy tax and the sales taxes on the hotel, plus local option sales taxes out of the retail property, given the estimates on those, to show the annual tax receipts that the city gets. And you show the city, the city's in a positive, the county's in a little bit of negative, but this doesn't, as Sam said, include the indirect benefits. And we think quite a bit of the property around there will redevelop. There's a, the shopping center across the street is very, it's vacant, so it's highly underperforming. And of course, having this type of development next to it would spur redevelopment of that property. And of course, this leads quite a bit into redevelopment of the bottoms area, which is huge and would generate the additional indirect tax revenues that would come from that. Overall, that's why we think that the TIF for this project does make a lot of sense.
So before we maybe go beyond this slide, there's a lot of numbers, a lot of information. Anything that we could answer on the Economic Impact Plan or the TIF that's in front of you now?
So the city gets 9.3.
That's over a 20-year term, so that, whatever that annual number was...
And that's combined sales, right?
That's, yes, that's the combined property and retail taxes, lodging, hotel, and then local option sales tax. Hotel sales tax specifically that are local option, and then the broader retail, local option, sales tax. So those calculations are here by year. We haven't done time, value, or money. We kept the term, the time term fixed, so we haven't tried to do anything with these over time. They're just flat calculations now. We know they'll change as tax rates change and other costs and financial things change. But yes, this would generate about $465,000 per year of additional tax revenue to the city. We're going to contrast that to the $1,494 per year we get from property taxes today.
Now, the hotel and the local option taxes that go to the county actually dedicated schools. That's the schools portion?
Right.
These schools?
In total, for the city and county, though, it's 20.6, based on what I'm looking at.
Right. Right. And that's just, those are direct tax numbers, direct benefits?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Aren't measured in this number.
And the county gets the $2,535 in property tax from this area today. So their annual number would go to 566 versus the $2,500. So it's just, with the TIF, what we want to show you with this table is with the TIF, there's still tax revenue coming into the city, it's just reduced by that property tax increment. Anything else on the TIF or Economic Impact Plan? We'll jump over and just cover a couple of additional things on the Broad Street project, if not. And so at the last workshop, we spent some time on the development team, provided a presentation on that. There were some questions that came out. Mr. Maxwell, I think you might have asked this about the breakdown between typical mix of rental versus owned, owned properties. And so we pulled some demographic information from areas generally described as downtown. You have to define a boundary on that, so we put one on it. That number looks like just under 75% is currently rented in the downtown market for Murfreesboro. 26% would be owned. And that's talking about the occupancy, not necessarily the ownership scheme, but the occupancy today. There's about 75% rental. We pulled similar demographic numbers on Huntsville at 67% and Nashville at 80% rental in their downtown markets. We also wanted to compare Murfreesboro to some cities that might be in a similar economic and population and community situation as Murfreesboro. Roughly 150,000 people, significant higher education or college in that community were the two things that we looked at. And so we identified some cities just to give us some additional color on this question. So downtown Fort Collins, you see that number at 67% rental. Denton, Texas, and Mr. Tyndall can tell you the colleges there. This is North Texas?
It's North Texas, University of North Texas and Colorado State is in Fort Collins.
Fort Collins. And then Springfield, Missouri, here at 94%. Springfield seemed to be a real outlier when we looked at their demographics and other things. It was a, even though it had a lot of similar characteristics initially to Murfreesboro, it's a very, very significant change and are much different in the downtown area than what I think our character downtown is. And so I only mention that to say this is a very, a very high number. It seems to be an outlier to me. We also compared to our neighbor to the north, Clarksville, with about 80%, with a thriving, growing downtown area, and Austin Peay right in the middle of it there. And then just to give you some information on the project at hand, Broad Street, if they build 100-unit condos, would put them at 71% rented product and 29% owned. And then if that's at 80, that number's at 75 and 25. So I'm just going to take those off now. And so we had a question on the team's experience with sale and condo ownership, and so Matt Taylor's going to come up and I think maybe help us with questions two, three, four, and then I'll jump back in on five. So Matt, if you don't mind coming up.
Sam, when you threw in the condos there and those percentages, did that also include the 239 apartments?
It did.
Okay, so that's with everything?
Yes, that's with everything that this project would provide. So just looking at that balance on the Broad Street development.
Sam, did you look at Knoxville? You showed Nashville and Clarksville. Knoxville's got a college in downtown.
Yeah, we'll be, I'd certainly pull that. That's easy information for us to get, and I'd be glad to share that with you as supplemental information.
I feel confident, looking at Knoxville right now, Knoxville is predominantly, if it's not rental, it's owner-owned.
Owner-owned.
Rental.
And we took this from the American Community Survey, so it doesn't make, it doesn't look at the underlying ownership, it only looks at the occupancy. Is this, is this resident paying rent or are they, or is it owner-occupied? So this is a blend of for-purpose leased products and then owner-leased products, so maybe a single-family house that's owned but rented or leased.
Three bedroom, double-foot.
It's hard to find a good source of information on the ownership scheme that underlies what's available in the market for rental. So we were looking at just the broad demographics of how much of the housing product is leased and how much of the housing product is owner-occupied. And that's what these numbers represent.
That last number was 80, 20? I was trying to, oh, 75, 25.
Okay, thank you. And I failed to mention this, but we did, we printed a copy of this for you with the animations as well on a separate page, so that doughnut chart, Mr. Maxwell, is a little bit later in that paper copy you have on your station.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else on the rent and own? Any questions, discussion on that? All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor then to maybe help us with questions two through five from that previous workshop.
Hey, Sam, I'm sorry, can you also, this isn't in our packet, is it online?
It is not.
Could you email it? I can't read these notes first.
I'd be glad to.
Good afternoon, Matt Taylor of SEC. So as Sam said, a series of questions that we had last time that administration asked us to address as far as our experience. You know, our development team is, has a wide variety of experience, whether that's in condos, commercial, or rental. And so, you know, we kind of have our main players up there. We all have a wide diversity of experience inside of each of those elements. As far as recession, none of us have a crystal ball. I think the trick is to make sure you've got a strong position, strong value in the project, you're capitalized well, and you have a good financial partner, which I think all of, we do that in all these instances. As far as timing on four or five floors, as long as pre-sales are going well during our design development stage, then we'll build the fifth floor. If those are going well, that means we're making more money, my clients are making more money, and so that decision will be made during that phase of construction. So as long as that demand is there for the condos, we'll have a fifth floor. And then we'll take number five.
Matt, you hang out, because I know there are a couple other questions on the next slide. So, Mr. Maxwell, I think too, you asked about the Smith Travel Resource ranking of upper-mid-scale, and so that's described here. I think it helped, it's helpful with a little graphic there just to see. I pulled a select number of those brands that's represented in that travel resource. Many of these I think would be familiar with, some I'm not familiar with. But I would maybe pause and ask Matt to step back up or somebody else from the development team with some updated information on the hotel situation for this project.
Good afternoon, Todd Seifer with HRP Residential. So just to give you a little bit of my background, so prior to HRP, I was with Gaylord Entertainment, now Ryman Hospitality, so obviously in the hotel space. But this classification here, it's really Smith Travel Research, which is based in Hendersonville, Tennessee. They have seven classifications here. This is the classification in the document, which basically just sets the baseline of what that is. Some of these properties on here, like the Moxie is a very good property, downtown, they have one in downtown in Nashville. But if you look at the ones above that, we've had conversations with folks like Hilton and Marriott, and I don't know if John, you've had a conversation with Hilton. We've actually gotten a letter from them on their Tapestry Collection, which is their boutique kind of hotel collection. Marriott has a similar type program called the Autograph Collection. That just allows them to be under the Marriott or Hilton brand for the reservation system, but allow them to have kind of a boutiquey hotel versus a chain scale there. So we have gotten interest in from Hilton on their Tapestry, which would fit very well with that, with that brand.
And so that was like breaking news. The development team sent an email about 10 o'clock this morning so that they'd received that letter of interest from Hilton on the Tapestry Collection. Todd didn't mention it, I don't think, but it is the next scale up in that Smith Travel Resource. It's actually upscale as far as its categorization by the, that resource, travel resource. Let's see, and then the Hometown Heroes, timing on WGS, and then EV's charging stations. I'll ask Matt just to give some color on those real quick as well.
So with Hometown Heroes, I think it was Ms. Gales Harris... Gales Harris that asked if we could control that long-term. Obviously, with the rental side, that will be in perpetuity, so that will never change. We obviously lose control of the condos once we sell that to the first owner. However, you know, we are investigating, looking into legal ways to keep somebody from coming in and taking advantage of that situation. You know, we don't want somebody coming in there and selling that again in six months to gain the, that built-in value or equity. We're not sure how to do that from a legal perspective yet, but we are looking at that. As far as timing on WGNS, that's gonna be the very first thing that you see happen. That, that construction would start, we think, about four months after our approval processes are completed. And then, EV inside the parking garages, we don't know the exact number, but we wanna meet the demand there, so we will integrate that into our design and planning process. There will be multiple EV charging stations inside of our parking garages.
And I should have also mentioned this to start, we left you a nice scroll copy of the schedule there, and so, there is a milestone in there showing WGNS start of construction and then WGNS move from its current location to the new location, which is immediately across South Church Street. In fact, it might be more visible on this, on this slide. So, today, WGNS is, is here, and in the development plan, they actually are setting aside a space at the corner of South Church and Sevier. They would be specific to WGNS, similar size, similar nature building, actually incorporated into a larger building there, so the building mass is appropriate, but it would include room for a second-floor studio and then also replacement of the first-floor retail that WGNS currently has. The other elements on here, just as a reminder, this corner of Vine and Front, Vine and Broad I mean would be the location of the hotel with some retail, retail office, and then condos at this location. This would also be retail and residential, and then here, this would be retail and residential. The pedestrian bridge, and then, of course, Town Creek across the street. And then, I'm just gonna bump through a couple of the slides I provided earlier at the workshop just to take a look at that, reminds you of those, those elements. And then, I wanted to spend a couple minutes on this slide, which talk about the public roadway improvements, and Mayor, we talked specifically about this insert here showing the realigned front street, and you can see there, we're signalized that, we'll do dual lefts out, a through and a right, and then an inbound lane. That's going to shift a couple hundred feet from its current location, so it will move into this. We do know we have some, some right-of-way needs on that Longhorn property there as well. But in the development agreement, the city will receive $5 million for the properties that, that we own. There'd be, there's a separate private agreement with WGNS that the development team would then acquire the current location of WGNS. Out of that $5 million, we would be reimbursing for some of these public roadway improvements. They're actually going to finish the detailed design and then construct those for us, and we'd reimburse them on a certified cost basis. But that's the, the front and Vine intersection, and then we'll look down here at Church and Broad, and you would see some additional lane improvements and widening on South Church Street all the way up to the exit out of the parking garage. Those would be public projects, public infrastructure projects that would be a benefit of this project moving forward. Couple of things that we have queued up in our traffic and transportation arena, but that this private development would be able to design and construct and oversee the construction of that, taking it out of our busy team's hands for a while. And then, also, just to touch on the pedestrian bridge, we have received a TDOT TAP grant. TAP stands for Transportation Alternative Program. I think that's at 1.4 million. I'm gonna look at, see if Mr. Kerr is still here. Seems like he's left the building. But we've received notice that we've been awarded 1.4 on that. It's not specifically a part of the downtown development project or the Town Creek project, but it's so interrelated, I think it's relevant to look at it. That 1.4 million will go a long way in getting us a pedestrian, elevated pedestrian bridge at Church and Broad intersection. And then, I think Mr. Tyndall or the development team, I'm available to try to answer any questions or hear your comments or have some discussion about TIF, Economic Impact, Public Infrastructure. What I will, will say to you is that we're still in progress on the development agreement. We've got a few details to iron out between the development team and our in-house and outside counsel and city administration. We hope to email the development agreement and the purchase and sale agreement out to you later this week for your consideration. We would anticipate possibly bringing that back at the August 31st meeting, but at this time, we'd like to have any discussion or entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Is there an updated unit count?
The updated unit count from the development agreement, that's, Matt, you wanna answer that? I think it's.
It's the, it's consistent with what we had last time. I think it's 236, I think is the number, Mayor. And then, anywhere from 80 to 100 condominiums, and then our bedroom or our hotel key count is, I think it's 80 to 150. We'll give ourselves a range. The letter we received from Hilton, I think they stated approximately 125 keys.
Speaking of Hilton, can we revisit that hotel discussion? I saw a bunch of brands on the screen, and then I heard that it was going to be a Hilton Tapestry, so can someone just clear this up?
So, we cannot lock down what I would say a brand, and we can't even put in, we won't even accept a letter of intent at this point. We don't control the property, and so, but we have had people on site, and we have had interest in specifically the Tapestry from the Hilton brand. Hilton has been here. We've explained to them the rest of our development. We've explained to them the rest of the development across the street with the Town Creek, and so, that's where that interest letter came from. Each of these, these just kind of go back to a benchmark inside of the Smith Travel Resource. They would just set some benchmarks inside of there. Obviously, there's some of these that you probably equate to a certain level, and there's others that I think you would expect to be a little higher. I think this has to do with level of service or food and beverage offerings, things like that.
And to maybe tag on to that, Ms. Everwater, in the development agreement today, there is a requirement that the, that the hotel provide a certain number of keys, 80 to 150, as Matt said, and that it be at least upper-mid-scale on the Smith Travel Resource. So, Todd shared with us that Smith Travel Resource includes seven categories of hotel offerings, and that's from luxury to economy. We, we thought that we wanted to be middle of that range or better with an offering downtown, and so, Mr. Tyndall proposed using the Smith Travel Resource reference as upper-mid-scale or better as the benchmark for any hotel that they would provide there. Obviously, they'd been shopping this product, and they've, they've had interest from Hilton and from a couple other hotel chains as well, but have advanced further with Hilton perhaps than the others.
Would that be a zoning thing going forward? So, let's say Hilton Tapestry goes in up front, and 10 years later, they decide that they wanna change nameplates, would they still be required to stay at that level or higher, or could they go lower at that point?
And so, the development agreement would survive, some of the elements would survive the actual transfer, and then that also gets represented into a zoning booklet. The zoning booklet would give us ability over the land use and zoning elements that you're very familiar with from Planning Commission. The development agreement would be the guiding document to judge a future, future activity I think it's a very good question, Mr. Wright, because we do know over time that, that as hotels are built and invested and they're new, if, if those are not managed and kept up properly, that generally you see a drop in the quality and level of that hotel over time.
Yeah, the Jackson Hotel was a really nice hotel 50 years ago.
So, the city has already agreed to this upper-mid-scale category in the development agreement?
We have proposed that in the development agreement as a benchmark for the, for what the hotel should be or better.
Right, the development agreement hasn't passed yet.
Right.
So, that's, that's what's being proposed in there, written in, and I think accepted by both sides at this point.
Yes, and so, so this was a question from last time, and so, we're just trying to provide some color on that for you, see if you have questions or concerns about, about this particular part of the development agreement. We'd have an opportunity to look at that now, and would love to hear your thoughts on the appropriateness of this level hotel or, or something different.
They're probably not unbelievable to you, but I have concerns about this part.
The reason for the classification, quite honestly, is just to put it that, because the hotel brands are always coming up with new, they call them flags, brands on there. So, that's why they're just using the classification as kind of a bottom level, 'cause if there's a new brand that comes in, in place, you wanna be able to have advantage of that. Obviously, the, given the, the quality of the, the overall development, from a, from a development standpoint, you want the highest hotel quality that you're gonna have there because you want that to make sure it works with what you're putting there with the hotels, the condos, and the retail there as well. So, that's why you're getting interest with Tapestry, 'cause that kinda fits into that, the overall development there. So, you're not gonna put a budget hotel next to the condos that are going in there or the multifamily and retail with the Town Creek across that, so.
Would you anticipate that more like what we see out in the avenue with Embassy and the hotels that surround there? That would be more like, I don't wanna say anything negative about this, the, the brands that you have up there, but there are some that are definitely considered more upscale than others?
So, I know out at the, what would the Embassy Suites be classified as? Do you happen to know?
Yeah, I can't seem to find this, this list online. Is it something I have to?
Yeah, we can get this to Sam.
Grab it too, okay.
I've got the, I've got the, the brand list and the seven categories that we got from the team yesterday, so.
Yes, I would like to see the other categories.
Like Downtown Franklin has that Harpeth Franklin Downtown Hotel.
Harpeth Square.
Yeah. I'm just gonna, and this is just my opinion, I wanna see something like that. Me too. That, that is what I was envisioning. Hilton Tapestry, sounds great. Nothing up there says Hilton Tapestry. I'm sorry, I'm not staying in Comfort Inn and Suites in downtown Murfreesboro. I'm a no. Like, I'm.
And the reason I'm saying that is, we're talking about changing both sides of Broad Street and really changing the look of downtown, and we're talking about taking Murfreesboro to another level. That's what we need to be talking about.
As a development team, you want that as well, right?
Exactly.
You make, make sure that it all works together, that it's all cohesive with what the overall development you're trying to achieve.
Absolutely. Exactly.
I'm like Jamie, if it's a Hilton Tapestry, that's great. If it's an AC Hotel by Marriott, you know, something that's a little more upper-scale, I mean, I'll go ahead and say I don't see it up there, but if it was the Motel 6 or something, I'm gonna be like, absolutely not.
Or a Best Western Plus? This is just not that. I saw this list, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm very disappointed. This is not what I envisioned. I thought we were talking Hilton Tapestry Collection, and I know you guys can't commit to that, or you haven't signed an agreement yet, I understand that. I mean, you would love to put that in there, I would love to be 20 pounds thinner. We don't always get what we want.
Don't write that, Scott. Okay.
Yeah, just trying to broaden to get enough, in case there's new flags that kinda come in.
Maybe we need to see the list above this list.
Yeah, mhm. At least.
Yeah, at least.
Well, I think what I've said is that the Curio property out of Franklin, we wanna see something like that.
Heck, yeah. I'm getting very sure. I like it so much.
So, the upper scale would have the AC Hotels in there, the Aloft Hotels, which you guys are familiar with. Obviously, the Tapestry in there, the Graduate Hotels, which is AJ Capital, the Graduate Hotels are there. So, those are the type of hotels that you're thinking.
I don't have, looking at the count, looking at the, I'll give you my main concern.
This doesn't, it's a lot.
Craig, we, we met, there's been a lot of rumored properties downtown that would be ready for development. We've got the one property downtown that we have worked on since 2019 that, you know, it's just sat there. And I was asked this question again on WGNS on, on Wednesday. This is a true mixed-use development, and the developer that we've met with on One East College continues to talk about what works for them and what, you know, this doesn't fit our model now, 'cause it originally had a hotel.
Right.
Then it was gonna be for sale condos, and then now, that got changed to add some more other units on there. And now, after y'all met with them, I think last week, now the, the new thing is, hey, we need to have, how many more units?
69.
69 more rental units and taking out the office space, and which was not what anyone that's sitting here would have agreed back years ago.
Yeah. Now, they've gone back to rework that. And that was not a good idea.
A guy told me a long time ago, I'm from Missouri, I'm from the Shelby State, so talk is cheap. But, I mean, I'm tired of getting punched up and down over, over that decision when we tried to make good faith with that, and so, the reason I say that, this property, then, you know, we've heard discussions about the old Red Rose property and the MED property, and then you throw One East College in, in that, which I don't even count anymore. I don't think Murfreesboro downtown can support, no matter what count comes back, or let me rephrase this, it may can support it, I'm not sure that we want, you know, seven or eight hundred units downtown Murfreesboro over the next five or six-year period.
Apartments.
Right.
Yeah, I don't.
So, the way I look at it, I think we're now trying to look at what's our best reality to develop and redevelop an entire area. In my opinion, I think this is perfect, considering what's happening across the street with the bottom study that we did 10 years ago, which is stalled because activity breeds activity, and we just don't have the activity down there. So, I would be for a project like this with the understanding that I'm not gonna be supportive if somebody comes through and says, look, I've got, I wanna buy the MED site, the Red Rose, I wanna couple those together, and I wanna put another 350 or 400 units. I mean, I'm a hard no on that. But I, I do think something like this makes sense, especially where we are in the current state with the other projects that we approved and reapproved. So, I think this is a, it's a, it's a good use for property that's not being used very appropriately right now. 'Cause the other part we do have to talk about is what we're gonna do with this property considering that we purchased the property on Robert Rose for the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department to go to. We relocated the police headquarters, so now we have 16,000 square feet that's vacant that we continually now are having other issues that we're dealing with. And the Fire Administration Building is getting ready to be relocated as well, so everything that's on that corridor is getting ready to leave in the next, the next year. So, what's, what's gonna happen from there? So, what, what do y'all need us to do? I mean, to say that we're, would be supportive of the TIF, or what? We were talking about this yesterday. What, what are y'all asking from us?
Just feedback, this is general information. We wanted to give you some of the outline on the numbers and what we're looking at on the project. Like Sam said, we're looking for, we're looking towards probably the 31st, put the agreements on there, but I think it would be as, as suitable as possible in agreement with the, with the developer. developer. So general information, I figure we've got everything in front of council. You guys can talk about it and give us the feedback, and then we'll move forward.
Do you want feedback from, before we go and start working on, or y'all start working on all this, do you want us to give you an idea of where we are right now?
On the TIF, you mean? Is that what you're asking?
Overall.
Overall.
The TIF is great, but, I mean, it's a good point Sean brought up. The TIF doesn't matter if the council's not supportive of the overall project.
Yeah. I love the overall project, for the record, and I agree with a lot of what you just said. I think this is awesome for downtown, and if I wanted to live downtown, I would probably live there, Sam. Yep, I'm supportive of the project.
Everybody knows where I stand on the project. I've got a problem with the mix.
Kurt?
I'm supportive of the project, but I think also the Town Creek project goes together with this. They don't go separately, they go together.
I feel the same way, as both of you all stated, with the caveat that staff understands that if another, another, I'm jaded because we've had these large projects come through the last five to seven years, and we all get excited, and then they don't happen.
Left at the altar, so to speak, yes.
Yeah, so if we feel like that this is the chance, that this developer can follow through, and that's something that we've talked extensively about, the financing and, you know, the current interest rate model that we have for multifamily right now, or when I say anything commercial, is just not great. I mean, 10-year treasuries at 409 today, and interest rates are at 8.5% for construction financing. So as long as everybody knows that going in, that we're, that's where we are, I just don't want to see us two years from now having to sit and have the same conversations we've had on other projects that, well, things have changed and...
Would it be appropriate, could I ask Ryan or Dean to come up, talk about their...
Hold on one second.
Go ahead.
Austin?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor.
I'll caveat it this way. I'm supportive of the hotel. I'm supportive of the condos. I'm supportive of the daylighting. I struggle with selling our property and putting in 239 apartments, and only 5% of that, 11 units, are going to Hometown Heroes.
Yeah.
We either need more, so it can be more tolerable, because most people that I've talked to, especially downtown business owners, they like everything except 239 apartments.
I've had the same conversations.
That's been the feedback I've gotten. And what I'm struggling here with, and I look on the spreadsheet, says pre-sale residential units, Building 2. That's the condos. 3124 through 11124. So if you've got all those sold by then, all 80 or 100, and you're kicking off construction of Building 3 on 111, and the shell is the same, I asked that last time, and a gentleman with the group said essentially the shell of an apartment and the shell of a condo is basically the same, that's what you want to call it. Why not shift that to condos? I think if this was 100% condos, 100% condos hotel, I think everybody on the council would be jumping up and down. But it's the apartment piece that I struggle with, especially the 5% that's so low, and I'm like Shane, where does it stop? I don't want 700, 800 apartments in downtown Murfreesboro. That's where I'm at. Bill?
Well, I look at this, and this is a beautiful document. I just want to see something shovel in the ground. I want to see something happen in our downtown. I know some of the problems is, we don't have comps for some of these developments in our downtown. And so we've got to have something to prove the viability economically of our downtown. So that would be only, the only caution I have is that we, similar to what the mayor said, is that we get all excited about what it means. You know, I'm a downtown person. I'm maybe not as concerned about the apartments issue. I think we've got to get something down, something in the ground, got to get something moving. I think a development done to the quality that we've seen on what your presentation has been will beget more of that in our downtown area, and we can make that decision. Right now, we've had too many exciting moments getting started on something that have fizzled out, so I'd just say, you know, just, you know, having these benchmarks, meet these benchmarks. You know, just have a plan and work a plan and make it work, so that then you look good and we look good. You know, so we've got, you know, we've learned. The difficult thing is, I think, when we first look at, it's the first time you ask somebody out for a date in high school, you realize, wow, somebody is willing to go out with me. And then all of a sudden, you realize, wait a minute, I'm worthy of people going out with me. And you have a different perspective on that. Now, all of a sudden, we have a worthy place that we believe is with great potential economically for people who live here, for people who own property here. And we just need somebody to prove that to us on the ground and to see that happen. I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be a game changer. But I've said that phrase before, I've used that phrase before, representing what people have brought to us. So I just say, you know, make this more than just a piece of paper, and I'll be happy with it.
Sam, do you think between now and the next time that we talk, you put this information in here about other downtowns, I think it would be interesting to see other downtowns that are close to us and even some that are not, like what Sean had recommended or Jamie about Knoxville? Yeah, I don't think, we don't have any downtown apartments that I can think of.
There might be some old holdovers from...
LeBeau Chateau.
This area. Well, we really looked hard, we really looked at a hard boundary downtown that would be Memorial, Broad, Highland, I maybe didn't even go over to Highland. We picked a very, very specific part. We didn't get, I tried to stay out of the MTSU shadow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, like what Bill's talking, I mean, I'm downtown. I mean, when we went and initially first started our building downtown, the old Alson Building, people thought we had lost our mind when we started that. And, you know, the rental rate in downtown Murfreesboro was $17 a square foot at that time for office space, and good luck finding office space downtown in Murfreesboro for 17 bucks a foot now. But if you were to say a block around the city square, going down East Main Street towards MTSU, LeBeau Chateau, and then next to, across from Central High School, I mean, those don't...
I don't even think I went that far, Mayor.
Those don't...
Those don't count.
...consider downtown to me. I'm just talking about like residential living downtown. We just don't have that much, but it would be interesting to see what other communities have that we could have some comparison.
Yeah, I just think of, maybe that, there's one building like at East College and South Church, or East College and East Lidl and South Church. It's a small apartment complex across from the county drug corps, as I recall, but one or two like that, but they're six-unit, 10-unit properties.
That's not the same.
No, it's not the same.
It's not the same.
It's not, it's not.
If you go to Knoxville, TDK just built some in Knoxville downtown. There's a guy out of Franklin, he just built some in Columbia downtown. You know, one of the things Joseph Baylock talked about, his vision was, to improve downtown, we've got to have rooftops, we've got to have people living downtown, working downtown.
Spending money.
And we've not done that.
Yeah, but it's not...
And, hold on, let me finish. We've not done that. We keep hollering, we want condos. Where are they going to put in condos anywhere else downtown? Because they're not. They're not. Because of the cost, the cost to do a condo. So the next best thing is, why can't you do a mixed-use, what we're trying to do here, to get some people and people living downtown? We're not saying go and put 12,000 units of apartments downtown. I know that, none of the council wants that. We don't want them out at Medical Center anymore. Why not downtown? We want people living downtown. If you look at Franklin, the reason they're downtown is booming is because they've got a mixed-use development down there. They got apartments down there, they got people living down there, they've got night traffic, they got day traffic and night traffic. We don't have that. Our stuff shuts down at 6 o'clock around here. Until we get more bodies and more heads downtown, it's not going to change.
I'm not getting hung up on the condo part. And the main reason why, and this is after really researching Knoxville the past year, and Jamie knows this probably more than any of us, just because you build a condo, that does not mean that that's not going to be bought and rented out.
Exactly.
And I could make the argument that having a larger complex that is managed by one group and maintained is a lot better than the individual-owned group units where someone has bought that for an Airbnb or just to lease out. I mean, we're dealing with that in the neighborhood we have right now, where the HOA covenant specifically say that you can't Airbnb, and someone's doing it anyway, and it's been extremely tough to be able to stop that individual from Airbnb in a community that the HOA says you can't. But that's not going to happen when it's managed by one group. So anyway, maybe that information would be great.
So if I get a little more detail, so we were talking about other downtowns, what specific information, getting that back to you?
I think it'd be good to see how many residential units are in, whether it's multifamily or high-rise or whatever, how many residential units are in downtowns that are either close to us or comparable cities? Like the information you've got for Denton, Texas and Clarksville, like I'd love to see in Clarksville, how many downtown units there are in Clarksville.
As far as, as far as like a multi-story, there's something that's not a single-family owned home that's rented or a duplex or triplex that's been built over time. You're looking more for the purpose-built?
Correct.
Rental, purpose-built condo, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we couldn't even put a, we couldn't even put a cumulative number on downtown Murfreesboro to know how many rental units we have, for example, in the Manny Avenue area. I mean...
Other than a resource like the American Community Survey, which was, you know, a branch of that, it's hard to, yeah, it's hard to tie down those rental units specifically, since we're not able to manage that information at the city level or require that information. So I think I understand the follow-up of some of our neighboring communities, purpose-built apartments and purpose-built condos, and those would be more than a quadruplex.
We are going to, the only thing I would encourage in the, I just hate sitting on not making decisions. We need, as a council, to make a decision and get the information to us to make a decision on this project, because Kurt is right, this is going in conjunction with Town Creek, and we need to make that decision at the same time and get both moving, or one moving, or, and make that decision. So I think the sooner the better. We've talked about this for almost, I mean, heck, it's almost been a year now that we've talked about this, because I remember when this discussion was, when Rick was here.
I've got a question, one last question, really prepared for you on the TIF. So for 20 years, the city's 9.3, the county's 11.3, so it's 20.6, the TIF is 26, but that gap will be made up by, you said indirect?
Well, a couple of things. The estimates on taxes are pretty conservative. We took the numbers that, the estimates that were given to us, and we actually, like we do with most economic development projects, cut that by a certain substantial percentage. So those are pretty, these are very conservative estimates on how many, how much sales tax will be produced, how much sales will be produced per square foot on retail, and how much room rate would be and when they go up. So I think this is a conservative estimate, and yes, it's just direct, this is coming directly from the project. The indirect would be off-site. So Joe Swanson has that shopping center...
Shopping center.
Shopping center on the other side, it's vacant. I think it was the old Bollies, I think was there or something. It's been vacant for quite some time.
UGO, United Grocery Outlet and stuff.
UGO.
Yeah, so it was, it's underperforming quite a bit. A project like this gives a huge incentive to improve that property substantially, because they'll get a lot more rent out of it, it'd be a lot more profitable. And so that would be an indirect effect of having this as opposed to align the property to sit like it is and then have no incentive to develop or no way to raise rents any higher than they already are. That would be an indirect effect. It would fill a gap, if there is actually a gap in there on what it would be, like I said, this is very conservative and probably will work out higher.
In our favor.
Yes, higher, more tax revenues generated for the city outside of what the TIF would be. The TIF has, the TIF is dependent upon the property values, so there's every incentive to make the property values as high as they could be. And so that's an incentive to improve the property, and we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And it's limited in a matter of years, so there's an incentive to get going and get it up and get property producing revenues as quickly as possible because it will end in 20-year period of time regardless of when it was built.
That's something to keep in mind. Quicker, more revenue, this TIF caps out sooner. It is limited on the dollar value. It's good for the development team for that cash to come in sooner as well. So if the TIF overperforms, it's good for the city, but it's also good for the developer. They get that, they get that tax increment. The tax increment is what it is each year. That part goes to retire the dead on the development. And then it caps out at 26 million, so, or 20 years. So it's to their advantage if it, if it works quicker as well.
This sheet starts in September, I guess, when the PUD and the TIF approval starts. Are we planning, are we on that? Will we have that before us by September 1?
Well, that's when the process, that's when the submittal would be made to the Planning Commission. So it's a submittal deadline in September, which would put them on an October Planning Commission Workshop Day meeting, and then maybe a November public hearing meeting for, at the Planning Commission. We're just following our normal development process on that, about four to five months from application to time it would be before council and approved at second final reading.
And our approval of the TIF related to the IDB?
So the IDB is queued up today. This will be advertised the 16th to be on the IDB to consider the TIF this month. The IDB would pass it, and then they would recommend it to the city and the county. Those recommendations of the IDB would be brought before you at a future council meeting. So it's a little bit chicken and the egg, but we're trying to, we're trying to advance the development agreement, purchase and sell agreement, the TIF documents to the IDB, and the development plan, the Plan Development booklet, and Plan Commission approvals, building permits. We're trying to push those all together to stay on track with that project, with that timeline, I'm sorry.
Sam, you mentioned that we're trying to, the county approval for the TIF, we're kind of running it parallel with the PUD. So we've been talking with the county the last month and a half, actually last year, with different commissioners about the TIF as well, bringing them up to speed, so they don't feel like they're at the back end of the conversation, because they are the, you know, the big boys.
Yes, and there's a, you know, a little bit more, there's a committee process there with the county commission, so you've got to get in front of the committees to make it on the county commission's regular agenda, and they're only meeting, you know, the third Thursday of the month, as I recall. So they're trying to align those, getting approvals along their way to stay on track to get into, I think that was a September meeting with the county commission as well, which would, you know, around the 21st to the 28th, somewhere in there.
Yeah, in October, we would go to budget, and I can't remember the other one, and then we go to final commission, so it's probably going to be in the November timeline for final commission for the TIF approval on the county side.
We've got a little bit more latitude with our city council meetings because we're meeting three to four times per month.
Okay, all right, we need to, I think y'all heard from everyone, so we need to move on to our next few items. move on to our next few items. All right, you have board and commission appointments. You have one board, excuse me, we have the 2023 dashboard, but does anyone have any questions for Aaron? Okay. You got the board and commission appointments. We had one individual that initially was appointed to the tennis commission, but we found out didn't live inside the city whenever they, their application. So based on our current discussions with, with pickleball, Alan Cutler, the person that's being recommended, submitted an application day before yesterday. He is the business manager for the Murfreesboro Pickleball Association. So we've got one spot with the tennis commission, so that, that would fit that representation.
Do we want to change the name, too?
Yeah, and Sean, do we, do we want to look at changing the name to the Tennis and Pickleball Commission, or do we want to call it the Racket Sports Commission, or, or do we just want to say, look, tennis is part of, pickleball is part of tennis? What y'all's?
Tennis and pickleball, or racket sports? But it's really.
We have to add someone for Badminton.
Hey.
You got any emails on Badminton, Jamie, but maybe you have.
I've talked to some people from the tennis commission that's serving now, and they were welcoming that. They were, they liked the idea that we had pickleball involved. So I think that's a good one.
I'm good with that.
Can we get a motion to change the name? Adam, I think we'll have to change the ordinance, but to go ahead and change the name to the Tennis and Pickleball Commission?
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the robe.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
I told, Bill, I talked to three different people in the commission, and, and I don't think anyone understands the amount of response that we've been getting to this. So it's, everybody can work together. Can I get a, can I get a motion to appoint Alan Cutler to the Tennis and Pickleball Commission?
Moved.
Second.
First and second. Please call the robe.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, under other business, you have a community investment program funds transfer.
This is to allocate the last portion of the 2019 interest. We have shown all of the 2019 proceeds as being spent, except for about $9,000 in unallocated interest revenue. I'm asking council's permission to allocate that to either the preschool building and/or other council-approved CIP projects, so that we can show 2019 as being fully spent.
So moved.
Motion and second. Please call the robe.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, any other business from staff?
No, we will meet on the 17th, evening of the 17th, and not on the 24th, and on the 31st.
Seventeenth, not meeting on the 24th and the 31st.
On the 24th or the 31st?
No, we'll meet on the 31st.
We are meeting on the 31st. Or, versus and matters. Okay, we are meeting on the 31st.
17th and 31st, we'll meet, and the next week is February 8. So that'll be a short week. We won't meet, and then we'll go into workshop meeting after.
Okay. Any other business from council?
Can do that.
All right, see you now. We'll stand adjourned.